All right. Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, February 11th. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Narit Katz.
President.
President Richard Katz.
President.
Commissioner Lehrer. Vice President McGraw. Commissioner Pender.
Present.
Three board members, a quorum is present. Mr. President.
Thank you, Shontae. Thank you. Welcome to this meeting of the Water and Power Board of Commissioners. Let's see. Go through the regular session agenda. Again, going to welcome everybody. Thank you for being here. Want to again send special thanks to all of the first responders that have been dealing with the firestorm in LA and the aftermath of the storm. I also want to call out special recognition to the women and men who work for LADWP, who are doing amazing work out there under trying circumstances and doing an incredible job. Hey, George. The, just to put it in perspective a little bit, I think there have been a lot of good things that Joe Romallo and his shop is putting, are putting out about what people are doing out there. But a number that I heard Janice mention a couple of times that just sort of helps with the perspective on why it takes a while to do this job is that in, before crews could go in and start working on the restoring power in the Palisades, they had to cap all the water part, all the water pipes that were connected to all those homes out there. Because when you have a fire like that, either the end cap melts or the pipe melts. And when that happens, the water just runs freely out of the pipes until they get turned, until it gets turned off. But to turn it off, you have to be physically out there and turning it off and capping it. So that's one, one reason why sometimes we don't have all the pressure we'd like to have, but also water is just running down the street sometimes and there's nothing you can do. But there were 5,000 of those pipes that had to be capped or replaced by an individual out, physically out there. You can't do it by remote control, can't do it by drone, you can't do it by anywhere other than a DWP employee going out there and replacing the pipe or putting an end cap on it and then shutting the water off and going from there. And the same thing has to be done with the gas pipes as well. So when people wonder, why does it take so long? Because it ain't easy. And it's dangerous and it's hard. And the men and women who work for this department, who are working 24/7 on this deserve our thanks and our praise and our prayers for doing a job that most of us wouldn't want to do or are certainly not capable of doing. But thank you to all of them who do this day in and day out and do a phenomenal job on behalf of everybody in Los Angeles. So with that, I'm going to start. Any Commissioner comments?
Don't dare me.
You're just getting warmed up. I know. What goes, um, public comment?
Public comment is open at this time to the people providing public comment. When it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have two minutes per item. If you are speaking on a specific item, you must stay on topic. Otherwise, your time will be forfeited and it will revert to general public comment. If you would like to speak for general public comment as well as a specific agenda item, you will have one additional minute on top of whatever time you have for your comments on the agenda item or items. We have a total of four speakers. The first speaker is going to be Gerardo Hernandez, who will be followed by Albert Almara.
Come on down.
Good morning, Board and Staff. My name is Gerardo Hernandez. I am a member of the IBW Local 11. I'm here to speak on item number three, the CDI program. I'm here to strongly encourage the Board to continue the program as it has helped a lot of us from the IBW. I am also a disabled veteran. This program allows me to continue working in the IBW and as an electrician. Apart from allowing myself to work, the program does benefit, besides the employee, it benefits the people that we do the work for, being out there and talking to these clients or customers, as we would refer to them. It allows them to get upgrades to their electrical lighting systems and now that we do the refrigeration, they don't have to, a lot of these small businesses don't have the money to pay for some of these upgrades. Allowing them to get it for free shows that not only are we giving back to the community, it allows them to save money on their electrical bills, which money can go back into their business, their family. Also, it makes the city stronger and more efficient. I strongly encourage that the program be approved as it continues to employ fellow veterans as myself, other IBW members, and it's great for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service also. I appreciate it. And that item will be up shortly, and we will take your comments into account while we're discussing it.
The next speaker is Albert Almara, who will be followed by Joe Sullivan.
You'll have to excuse me a little bit. I'm, I'm out of my element, so just give me, give me a chance here.
You'll do fine.
Good morning, Board and Staff. My name is Albert Almara. I'm a member of IBW Local 11. I strongly encourage the Board to approve the agreement for the program management of the commercial district install program. I've worked on the CDI program for about eight years. Thanks to the program, like the CDI program, I earned a good pay, benefits, and retirement, and have been promoted to foreman since I've been with this company. Prior to working with the IBW, I was not in such a good position. I had a very colorful past, and I'm not very proud of it, but I've worked hard to become a better person for the community and for my family. So obviously, that's my past. The program makes sure that we are going to, we're going to work hard and it creates opportunities for new apprentices because that, actually, I do enjoy that a lot because I get, I, I can see when somebody comes from a past that I've come from. And I explain to them that it's much better to work honorably than to be dishonorable. So I would just like to say again, I encourage the Board to approve the agreement, and thank you very much.
Oh, and by the way, never say that you're out of your element, because you are. Just what you want to be. Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming forward. Next?
Yes. Good morning. Board, President Katz, Board staff. My name is Joseph Sullivan. I work for the National Electrical Contractors Association and IBW Local 11. And this represents about 350 electrical contractors that partner with about 11,000 union electricians. And I want to express our strong behalf of both IBW and NICA, our very strong support for the approval of the CDI contract for the program manager. Not only is this program very important for reducing the load and reducing power to allow us to build more renewables and be a more sustainable Los Angeles, so it's always important for the environment, but it, as, as they mentioned, this is creating high road careers that change lives, that change the community. These careers include five-year no-cost apprenticeship training, career placement, career advancement, on-the-job training, earn while you learn, no-cost mentorship. So they're really wonderful careers, and as a result, we have the most skilled and trained workforce performing this work. Most of them are trained in advanced lighting controls and additional three-day class around this. Our contractors have very strong relationships with Will Dan and very much enjoy working with them and have found, we have a very good synergy. And because of the consistency this program's had over the years and our long-term relationship, which we very much appreciate and want to thank you for, we've been able to create a dedicated workforce like these gentlemen you just met that understand this and can do this work efficiently, fast, and do it well, and do it right. And they've been doing it for years and they're the experts. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for coming forward. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Sayed Kashani, who will be followed by Marissa Solis.
Good morning, Commissioners. I was here last time. I just want to follow up on the comments I made before. I see your director's still here. Number one, my comments and those of others who are contesting your director are not directed to the rank and file and employees of the department. We all know that the employees work very hard, especially during the fire, at risk to themselves. We are not challenging the department or the employees. We challenge your leadership. We believe the Commission should reconsider your decision to appoint Ms. Quinones and reanalyze what you did before. Number two, going back to what you did before, I stated last time that you appointed Ms. Quinones without completing a background check. That was not a rhetorical comment. And by the way, I don't find this amusing either. If you did a background check, you would find out, for example, that while Ms. Quinones was at PG&E in charge of the gas pipeline division, her division was fined $1.3 million by the California Public Utilities Commission for corroded and leaky gas pipeline connections. Now, I'm sure she'll say, that wasn't my fault, that happened before, but that's not, that's not accurate. She, she became head of the pipeline division of PG&E in June of 2021. The division was fined in June of 2022, one year later. And part of the fine was for failure to correct violations on a timely basis. And this is a pattern we see. She joined the division, she had a year to correct the violations, they were not corrected timely, which is why the division was fined. And we see the same situation here. Ms. Quinones was not your director when you drained the Santiness Reservoir, but after she became the director, she did not take any timely action to fix that problem. Now, that's just one thing that's easily found in a background check, which you did not complete before appointing her. I'd like to just finish with a suggestion. The reservoir is still empty. You apparently still have problems with the cover. May I suggest that you ask the EPA or whatever the regulatory agency is for a waiver to allow you to refill the reservoir without a cover, so you can get it back full and perhaps be ready for the next fire season, and then you can address the issue of the cover later. Now, I understand this was explored before, but wasn't pursued. Again, I think under the current climate, the current new administration in Washington, you can get a waiver and you can refill the reservoir now and have it in place for the next fire season without replacing the cover, and that will give you more time to deal with the cover.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Marissa Solis.
Good morning, President and Board. I'm the developer and owner of 1822 Overland. And during, first of all, thank you for helping all the people who lost their homes. We were able to provide housing for about 10 people, and we're currently working on 16 units. We are about 45 days to finish, and we have to do an electrical conduit, and we have not been able to get a day to start the work. And that's why I'm here, because I would love, love to finish this project as soon as possible. Dove is, he has been working with me alone on the utilities, and we just want to know if there was any possibility we can get the job sooner than later. You want to tell them what's going on, like?
So just very briefly, we were, we received our pre-con package on the 13th from the ESR.
Just for the record, state your name, please.
Dove 11.
Thank you.
Yeah. Received our pre-con package on the 13th from the ESR. Needed some clarification regarding the PL, which we provided to the, the underground construction supervisor on the 22nd, and he confirmed receipt. And I understand DWP is inundated at the moment. We were told to check back the last week of February for a potential start date.
Okay.
And we are 45 days to finish the project, so that will delay us, you know, probably three months. But thank you for your time, and we appreciate your help.
All right. We will check on it. Make sure that...
Someone is coming to speak to you outside.
Mr. Rondo.
Thank you.
Public comment is closed at this time, Mr. President.
You know what? Can we, can I spend one more second on public comment? Do you mind? Mr. Kasani, can we see you again for one second, please? You know, I appreciate you coming back this week. I had a lot to think about after your public comments at last week's meeting. I have a couple of things I want to clarify. We are here to serve the public, and we really appreciate when people come in and lay things out in front of us as, as they see them. And so I've, I've taken all of your comments in, in that sort of generous spirit, but I want to offer a couple of thoughts. First, our general manager's name is Ms. Quinones. I just wanted to make you aware that last week when you, or two weeks ago when you stood up at this podium and played us a video about our diversity statistics at the organization, it didn't sit well with me. And what I wanted to share with you that we are incredibly proud of what a diverse and strong workforce that we've built, and that is part of Ms. Quinones's job, is to monitor those things and make sure we're a healthy and productive workforce. And saying that it's a zero-sum game to come up and play a video like that and to harp on DEI, I'm sure you're aware, in the current political climate, is becoming more of a racist dog whistle. And I think to come up and say that, you know, someone can't effectively do their job because they're too focused on promoting people of color within an organization like this is not an effective way to broach that topic with some sensitivity that, you know, you believe is important for us to look at. So I wanted to share that advice with you. I think that our job up here is to listen to and interface with the public to guide strategically this institution and to understand the competing interests at play and make sure that we chart a course that's going to keep everyone healthy, happy, and safe. And, you know, those, those comments, I think, verged on the inappropriate. And I wanted to make you aware that they, they were not well-received here, at least by me on the podium. So thank you for coming. Thank you, as always, for your time. But, you know, I just urge a considerable amount of judiciousness in what you decide to share in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both.
You brought me up to lecture me?
I brought you up to respond to your public comment.
We're not going to have a debate. All right. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Quinones, who I have also asked to give us an update on preparation for the anticipated rain activity, rain event that's supposed to start tomorrow or Thursday.
Thank you, President Katz. I appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on the storm, but before, I love to talk about my background, since my background check has been at stake so many times on this podium now. And there was a comment last board meeting about me being on every catastrophe that there has been in California and Puerto Rico. And there's a very important reason that no one has cared to mention is that I've been serving this country for over 20 years, and my background as a commander in the United States Coast Guard is in emergency management. The reason why I've been on all of those emergencies is because I've been either volunteered to support an emergency or I have been deployed to support an emergency, including this one. So not only do I have 20 years plus serving this country, I also have a mechanical engineering degree that I graduated with honors. I have two graduate degrees, and I happen to like to get tough jobs, and this is a tough job. So was PG&E, and so was Puerto Rico. So I want to make sure for the record that if we're going to do background checks, we should do the whole story of background checks, not take special points on my career to make a point that's very pointed at creating a different narrative.
I understand.
All right?
Appreciate it.
All right. For storm preparations, I just want to say, you know, we had rain coming in a couple of weeks ago. The team had deployed a lot of resources to it. So we have started inspections of those resources that we have already deployed, including K rails, sandbags, any material to support mudslides or possible mudslides, including making sure that our water system is ready for any rainfall that comes in. We have engaged our partners in other utilities to run weather models and the weather service. We're expecting the worst of the rain to be Thursday night into Friday morning, and we are expecting that there might be a high possibility of mudslides. But with that being said, we have a plan to activate our PDOC, ensure that we move crews into the area to do restoration of customers. The water team is releasing the geotechnical team today into the Palisades to look at possible mudslides area and prep for that. And then our customer service organization has been working diligently on getting messaging out to our customers. But important for our customers to know is 911, if you see a wire down, when we see rain, we usually see outages and wires down, and the moment that you see a wire down, do not touch it. Call 911 or 1-800-DIAL-DWPP to ensure that we're able to release crews immediately to those affected areas. Outside of that, our fleet team has mobilized equipment, including four-wheel loaders available for immediate deployment, backhoes, transporters, and dock trucks. And then we will secure additional units into the Palisades area, and, and we're monitoring the EOC activation at the city level, and if we see the situation get out of our control at the PDOC, we will activate the department EOC to support the restoration.
One thing I was going to add to your comment about, if you see a wire down, call, especially if it's in water, don't walk up to it.
Yes.
Just keep your distance and call 911.
Yes. Good point. I have a couple of updates, but I don't want to take the thunder away from the divisions on what we've accomplished. It's been incredible on the power side. So I'll, I'll pass it to Dave Hanson to talk about a restoration in Palisades, and then, and someone can talk a little bit about the do-not-drink notice and the process that we're going through, and then I'll add more comments at the end. So Dave.
Great. Thank you, Janice.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. So yes, to jump on top of Janice's comments about the PDOC, we are planning on standing that up on Thursday morning at 07:00 for part of the storm prep. We did have a call this morning with all the power system directors and our public affairs information officers, just to kind of talk about preparations that are going to be made. We are focused, as usual, on making sure that we focus on storm restoration work and large power outages, anything with an immediate threat to life. Our eyes are also on Palisades because of it being a burned-out area. We are concerned about mudslides, so like Janice said, we do have equipment mobilized, and we're keeping our eyes on that. Since last week, we've restored 1,096 customers just since Friday morning, working through the weekend, all the way up until this morning, customers on regular power. We do have about 110 customers on generators. We've taken portable generators out to the Palisades, and so anybody that we're looking at that looks like it's going to be a long, complex restoration, we're trying to get them cut over to generators as well. We did present to the ad hoc committee for city council last week, and we did show them some map shots from our GIS system that kind of shows when the county went out there and started doing assessments and counts for the houses. We have a database that shows what structures are completely lost and which ones are damaged and which ones are still standing. So we are getting a lot of frustrated customer calls from some neighborhoods that are still standing, but their power circuits run through a completely demolished area. So we're having to be very creative with how we're trying to get those circuits back online, and we made significant progress through the weekend. So we're very happy to say that most of the standing homes that are in the Palisades have been restored. We're still continuing to work and prioritizing getting everything back on that we possibly can with temporary power poles, with overhead poles. Our long-term plan is to come in and go underground, so we're working closely with Council District 11, Tracy Parks, keeping her involved in the process. So that's it for, for my report.
I do have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you. Now, you mentioned mudslides, which is not our primary duty. While we have equipment out there, what are the major other companies and other entities that are involved with those mudslides or potential mudslides?
Well, we do have FEMA, and they're starting, did you want to take that question?
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer. I mean, we have LA San, that's where sanitation's working a lot on this, and then BOE, it's working on creating mudslide prevention in areas that are not tied to our infrastructure, but anything in our infrastructure we're doing. In the Palisades, like Dave was saying, Army Corps of Engineers is present, and so is EPA and FEMA, and so we're all working on coordination with those agencies in the area as well.
All right. Thank you. I knew it wasn't just us.
Yes.
Kind of power lift all of that. And then the other question, you said that we have 110 that are on generators at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, what if someone is listening now or comes up to one of our people in the field there and says, hey, I think that we could use a generator at our place. We are not on it, and we need it.
Right. Good question. Thank you for bringing that up. So we did put out a communication to the public, anybody that is still being affected by a power outage, we're asking them to call our 1-800-DIAL-DWPP. By the end of, of this month, we do intend to have a Palisades Recreation Center email and direct phone line. But right now, we're going to handle any remaining power outages in the Palisades like we would normally handle on a storm with electric trouble. So we're asking our customers to call that number. That way, we can track their outage. And anybody that's going to be a very complex restoration, then we would look at generators, and then anybody that got left out or forgotten through our normal restoration efforts, we'd prioritize that. We do have a pretty interesting story that we heard while we were out there yesterday because a lot of times when we're looking at the data and we're looking at the emails, some of the personal side of it gets lost. And Mr. David Pratt, superintendent, shared with us a story from one of his foremen that they were fighting this trouble issue all day long, and they finally got the circuit to come back on, and when it came back on, it was only one house on the whole street. And right at that time, a family pulled up in a van, opened the door, had arms full of groceries, and they went into that house. So just coincidentally, thankfully, we were able to restore that house for that customer. And I think we're going to be seeing a lot more, like real personal stories like this that we'll be bringing back to the Board at a later date.
Do you want to talk about the door hanger and the importance of that also?
The On-Site Command Center, the, what we're calling the UROC, the Unified Utility Recovery Operations Center, they coordinated closely with Joe Romallo's team in corporate communication, and they came up with a door hanger. So normally, when we work electric trouble, we have our line crews out there, our line patrol mechanics, our patrolmen, and then the district crews work in support of electric trouble. And so it's all overhead and underground, essentially line, line workers out there doing this work. In this instance, we have other electrical workers, electrical mechanics from power construction and maintenance, peddymen from our utility workers, electrical workers from different groups, going out and knocking on doors and asking customers, doing some checks, looking at their panels ahead of the power restoration to make sure that that house is okay and ready to energize. If nobody's there, they did develop a door hanger that they're leaving behind so the customers know that DWP came by.
Where are we in terms of the Palisades about people being allowed back into the homes there?
So another good question. So every morning, there's a unified command meeting that's led by CAL FIRE, and we have representatives at this meeting, and they discuss reopening the Palisades. So the, we understand the political pressure to try to get it...
Not reopened yet.
It's still not reopened, no. Residents are allowed to get in through the checkpoints, but we were just there yesterday, and we're going again tomorrow morning, and it's still restricted access. They don't have a timeline yet. They meet on it every day and discuss opening it the next day. So I think as we work towards restoring the streetlights and getting the traffic signals back on, that's all public safety that checks a box and says, okay, we're ready to repopulate.
And we are recommending not opening it yet in every meeting because of the amount of crews we have up there, over 120 crews with heavy equipment and moving poles and wires and stringing wires across streets. It will slow us down on the, on the restoration rebuild. And also, we are working with the fire department to do the fire inspections of the hydrants and then effect any repairs based on that before we say it's safe for bringing people back in.
And they haven't cleaned the debris out of the Palisades yet.
Not, not all of it. We've been cleaning a lot of our debris, but, but that's another point. Yesterday, when we were there, there was hundreds of dump trucks lined up in the streets. So traffic in that area is very congested right now.
Yeah, no, I can imagine. I mean, I was watching, actually, I was talking with a colleague who had talked to a water, a water person out of Paradise, California, which had their fire five years ago. And the point they were making, you know, some, which we need to keep reminding people about, because I, I mean, I understand the desire for normalcy and want to get back in the house and, you know, something that's familiar. Cancer clusters are just now starting to show up in Paradise, up in Northern California five years later. And, you know, that toxic... And, you know, that toxic stew that's out there that our folks are in is dangerous for our folks, but it's also dangerous for people who want to get in there too quickly. And, you know, I mean, it's easy for me to say, "Take your time," because, you know, my house is still okay. And it's not in the Palisades, but it's okay. But I understand people's desire. But if you wait against finding out about cancer clusters in a couple of years, people need to think twice before rushing back in. It's not safe until CAL FIRE says it is. Thank you, guys.
And Anselmo, you want to talk about...
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, I'm going to talk a little bit about our activities with the do not drink notice. I'll talk a little bit about our field operations, some of our water quality sampling and testing that we've been doing, and also a little bit of outreach as well. So from the field operations and water quality sampling perspective, we, this week, are going to complete the second round of flushing all the pipes in the Palisades. So this will be the second time we'll do it. That's around 95 miles of pipe that we are re-flushing and will be completed by the end of this week. That's nine service zones that we're doing there. Thus far, we have collected around 150 water quality samples from three service zones, the 720, the 498, and the 320 service zone. So all of those, we've collected 150 samples. The challenge that we're having right now with the rain is that we take these samples that are usually in meter boxes. So as it rains and water moves in, sometimes it actually pools in the meter boxes, and that could have an impact on the quality of the results. So what we've had to do at times is have to find different locations or reschedule the sampling to make sure that we don't have any other constituents that are polluting the samples that we're taking. But still, we've been able to accomplish 150 samples taken. Of the 150 samples that we've taken, we've gotten results for roughly 120 or so of them. Most of these samples are being processed by the department's water quality lab. The reason why we're doing that is because it is a state-certified lab, and we can turn around results in something like 24 to 48 hours. If we go to outside labs that we have contracts with, it will take a little longer. Of the 120 samples, actually 130 samples that we already gotten results for, most of them have been completely clear. We've seen some trace levels of benzene in them. So for those areas, we are working with the California Division of Drinking Water to retest those and provide that information to them. So that's information that we're going back and forth. And consequently, we have not cleared a single service zone yet because we are retesting in certain areas to make sure that everything is clear. If we retest and we re-flush and we're still having any kind of traces of benzene, we have options. We can remove and replace the service lateral and potentially look at the water main itself. Most of the locations where we found trace levels of benzene have been in what we call dead end, meaning it's the end of the pipe. The water flow stops there, and there is a service connection right towards the end. So when we're doing flushing and moving water around, water gets to that point and stops there. So obviously, that's an area probably the most conservative place to test. And we're finding certain hits here and there, but trace levels for the most part, except for one location. When it comes to outreach, we did put together additional information on ladwp.com that provides information on all the steps that we're taking when it comes to clearing the do not drink notice. So we talked about the flushing. We talked about the stagnation for three days, the testing and the sampling, and then the testing of that. That information is on the website so that any customer that wants to understand the process that we're taking can go there and see that information. They can also put in their address there and figure out if they are in the do not drink notice. Now, the one additional step we're taking is now that we're getting results, we want to make sure that we can articulate and communicate this information to the public at large. So staff has been working with communications and other folks on an ArcGIS story map that would allow you to see it visually through a map or a table. So as we get results, people will be able to see what the result is and where it's actually located within the area that was impacted. We feel that that's information that's important to the public. There's been clear from public meetings that that information is something they want to see. So our expectation is that that will be available by the end of the week. We also have been participating in multiple public meetings. Some of them have been hosted by the local council office, others by other entities. And my staff has been out there on a daily basis providing information because we want to make sure everybody is well informed. And lastly, we have, because we still have the do not drink notice in effect, we have five bottled water distribution locations within the Palisades area where any homeowner that needs water for drinking or brushing or cooking can go there and get a case of water. So those are all located within that area, and we're always looking to expand that even more. And that's the end of my report.
Joe, do you want to add on? You're running the comms on this and putting out a lot of great information. Anything you want to add to?
Yeah, just our corporate website, ladwp.com. The homepage has links to all of the information that you've heard today. Also, our newsroom. We were pleased this morning that the mayor had announced the restoration of service to nearly all of the household home customers in the Palisades area. The webpage that Anselmo mentioned is linked from the homepage, but it's also found at ladwp.com/palisadeswq.
Just to be clear for my brain, which is running behind everybody else's this morning. But the mayor announced that the power is restored, but it's not a return to the Palisades.
Correct. Yes. That just that we had, our crews over the weekend, had completed restoration of power to nearly all customers who are able to receive power.
But that still doesn't mean they can go live in the house yet.
That's a building and safety issue in terms of whether a home is red-tagged or not. We would not be restoring power, Dave, I don't believe, to a home that's red-tagged. It would just be one that's green-tagged or is otherwise habitable.
That's correct. That's how we're prioritizing it.
But in terms of the distinction made by CAL FIRE and others about the toxics, et cetera, even though there's power going back to the homes that are structurally appropriate, that doesn't mean that people can go back and live in the homes yet.
I don't think there's a moratorium of them not able to live in their houses. There's a lot of people living in the Palisades right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I thought there was still...
Yeah.
Not supposed to be.
The discussions in the morning is opening the Palisades to the public, not to the residents. The residents are able to go in and stay on their houses.
The only other thing we wanted to add is that if customers, as was mentioned, are in their home and don't have power for any reason, to give us a call at 1-800-DIAL-DWP. And also water, because so many water services, as you mentioned at the beginning, were turned off. If they're in their home, they should be able to have water service if it's habitable, and our crews can go out and turn the water back on for them.
So the ones that we're going to turn the water back on for that are still living in the Palisades, that water is safe for them to do what?
That water is, if they want to use that to, for example, wash something off, they can do that. What we're telling them is to not use it for drinking, not use it for cooking. If they want to take a shower, what we recommend is taking a lukewarm shower, not a hot shower, because the volatile organic compounds that could be in the water, they volatiles with heat, and it becomes airborne. So the recommendation is to not drink it, not cook with it. But if you're going to use it to take a shower, just for it to be lukewarm. And I will say that of the 4,900 rough services, roughly services that we turned off, we've actually reopened back up over 100 based on request. So as customers are going back or if they never left, the last crews to reopen it. Now, what they're doing is calling our control board, letting us know, and we'll reopen it. But we make sure it's clear that it is not for drinking purposes. We also recommend to anybody that is living in the Palisades is to flush their home pipes for five to 10 minutes before they use it for anything.
It is important to note, though, when you open the 100 customers, you actually have to repair the service. And that's why we shut it down, because there was an active leak in that property.
Some properties had leaks. But really, what it was a lot of times is we would encounter homes that were standing, they were not burned, but the homeowner had left the water running. We're not allowed to go on private property and start shutting off people's individual spigots. So we shut the service at the meter box. So if that was the situation, and the homeowner comes back and wants the water reestablished, provided that they don't have a leak, we can turn the service back on with the recommendations of how to use the water.
So again, back to the 100. So do we ever drop off any water at the set homes? Or do they always have to go somewhere to get it? Because if I woke up and wanted a cup of coffee, trust me, I don't want to have to go somewhere to get a bottle of water to make the coffee. I want the water there.
That's understandable. So right now, we have the drinking water or the bottled water distribution facilities. We are working on securing a contract to have water delivery. That's something that's being worked on right now. John Smith, our CEO, could probably add a little more to it. But that's the next step. We are also engaging with the Red Cross. The Red Cross is out there at the present. They're providing support to the community, and we're talking to them, potentially they themselves, as they go to homes to deliver other things. It's also taking water. So we're trying to approach this from a kind of a multi-pronged perspective. There are some people who may have mobility challenges and cannot get in the car or walk over and grab water. So that's what we're trying to meet that need right there.
I appreciate that. And if you remember, I think I interrupted you or followed you last time, and that's what's kind of... I didn't want people to think that this is just a numbers-testing thing to us. We do care. We are trying to do the best. And your report today reflects that to me, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Anselmo, let's update the board on the reservoir repairs, too?
Sure. So last week, the contractor that was hired to repair the reservoir did a job walk. They went out to the field. They went out to the reservoir itself.
The cover.
This is on the cover specifically for Saninets Reservoir, yes. Upon inspecting it, a couple of things that came up. One is that the tear that is on the cover, initially, we're thinking that it was around 130, 140 feet long. They confirm it's 210 feet long, the tear. They also noticed that there are some pinholes and some burn holes. So we had some of the embers that were flying as a result of the fire that fell in the cover and burned a hole. My understanding is that despite the level of damage they saw, it can be fixed and repaired. So the contractor, as we speak, is working on the plans. They have to actually design the fix because of the length of this. They're working on that right now. The expectation is that they're going to start the work by the end of the month. And our goal is to have the reservoir refilled and back in operations by April, mid-April or so. If I get any updates or changes in the status, I will let you know. But staff is actively working on this.
A couple of quick questions. Our regulator for that reservoir is State Department of Water, I mean, the Water Resources Control Board.
Yes. The local office is the Division of Drinking Water. They're part of the state board. As a matter of fact, they're out there today with staff visiting the Palisades.
Great. And then, I mean, to both you and Joe, great job on getting that website up and laying out those eight steps for people to let them know sort of where we are in the do not drink notice and what the procedure is to get that notice cleared and who's in charge of what at what stage. You mentioned we're doing our second flush of those systems in the Palisades now, and I think that started at the end of January. In case I missed it, did you have a date that you anticipate that second flush being finished? And do we anticipate having to do a third flush of the system?
We expect to be done with the second round of flushing this week.
Okay.
I don't know if we're going to need to do a third flush. I think that as we start getting results from the samples, they're probably going to be a little more localized if need be. But this is kind of an overall flushing of the system. So I am not anticipating doing a third round unless the Division of Drinking Water directs us to do so. And I think it will be based on if they see samples and they see a cluster, or they see them spread out quite a bit, they may say, "Go ahead and do it." If the samples that demonstrate that they have some trace level of benzene or any other VOC on very specific locations, my expectation is that they'll ask us to address it at that location if everything else is clear.
Okay. Thank you. That's so helpful.
I got to... And I'll pursue it after the meeting, but I'm still a little concerned about the much longer list of what you can't do with the water at this point than what you can do with it. And I don't... And reconciling that with letting people back in the homes doesn't make a whole lot of sense from my perspective. People much smarter than me are looking at it, so I want to get some more briefing on it.
Sure. We can do that.
But I'm concerned that, you know, when you look at all the things you can't do with the water, expecting family with kids or what have you to, you know, not do anything with the water there is asking a lot, I think. And I just worry about, you know, the results. And, you know, as we know, some of these things take years to show up. And we want to get it as clean as possible. And I know that's what the department does, and we service very, very clean water and very, you know, appropriate water. But I'm just trying to reconcile the two things in my head.
Absolutely, President Katz. And certainly, we can set up a briefing afterwards. I would love to have my water quality director and his senior staff be part of that conversation so we can talk about it, because there's a lot of things that we're recommending to not do. And I understand your point is it's very difficult, especially when you have perhaps children, for them to know, "Oh, don't turn on the water. Don't do this. Don't do that." So we can certainly have that conversation. But we're following the guidelines that we've been given by the Division of Drinking Water. But obviously, if the department wants to be more conservative, that's something that we can certainly do in the messaging. But I do want to be very conservative in the way that we do this and clear it. A lot of folks are very interested in us, you know, allowing them to start drinking the water again. I want to get it done the right way. I don't want to say, "Go ahead," and then two weeks later say, "Sorry, we missed something." We want to make sure that we are as clear as possible when it comes to the quality of the water.
No, I would appreciate... Let's set that up. I wonder how many people would be anxious to get back and drink the water if we made them sign a waiver at the same time. I bet the interest goes way down at that point. But let's find out what's real and what's not. And I don't want to unnecessarily worry people, but I want to make sure, as I know the department does and you guys all do, that we don't do anything prematurely and make sure that people are as safe as they possibly can be.
Yeah, we take the water quality very seriously. And in the department, I want to share, though, not because that makes it better, but the system was not damaged during the fires, which has helped us get the results that we're getting on the water quality test. We have over 150 tests, and only seven have above levels. Most of them are between 1 and 2 PPVs, parts per billion. One of them is higher at the end of a system. And so we're working very closely with the Division of Drinking Water and figuring out how to do on those areas where we see concentration of sediment. But based on what we saw in Paradise and what we're seeing here, we have a better, faster way to clean water. And also, the customers are asking for us to share the results the customers are asking for us to share the results of the water quality tests, and we're working with communications and IT to create a map to help the customers know what was the result on their zone and the specific areas based on the GIS maps.
Yeah, the ArcGIS story map is a great idea. That's a really powerful tool, and I think it'll give people that kind of transparency and peace of mind that they're really looking for. And I agree, I'd really love to be part of that conversation with Richard and with you, Jonathan, about where we are in water quality. But just for the purposes of this conversation, very briefly, my understanding is that, you know, our work in partnership with DDW and trying to get this Do Not Drink lifted, Do Not Drink is still at least one level below the highest level, which is Do Not Use at All, correct?
Yes.
So, there has been some sort of, there has been some scientific calculus about the level of danger, liability exposure here, and that, you know, this water is safe to use in some instance, in some specific instances, and really understanding for the public the difference between appropriate or acceptable safe use and not safe use is super important for them to educate themselves about.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I presume that we don't shut off the water because there are such important uses. Families have incurred great costs being outside of their home, not only the, plus the emotional toll, and I think are finding it very comforting to be back in their homes. And without the water turned on, they could not use the sanitary facilities, the toilets, et cetera. So, I think it does make sense that they have the access, but I echo President Katz's concerns. It just makes sure that we are continuing to communicate very clearly to residents what they can and cannot do so that they are not, you know, sometimes when people are waiting, if they aren't given enough information, they'll start making their own assumptions and they'll start experimenting. So, we want to make sure that it's a frequent update in terms of the uses.
Yeah, we certainly want to make sure that we are as clear as possible in communicating the usage of the water. We put out numerous signs out there before anybody was let back in. As homeowners come back and they ask for their service to be re-turned on, we provide them with a door hanger that, once again, reiterates all the different things you can and cannot do. We, in addition to that, we have it on the website. So, we're trying to find every way possible to make sure we deliver the message. But I think the point that President Katz made is a good point, and we just need to make sure that we're being very conservative. And I can tell you that I am being very conservative when it comes to the quality of the water, because I want to make sure that we're serving nothing but the best. So, I don't want to make the difficult situation that is now even worse.
Appreciate that.
And we will set up the briefing.
And the department's always been a leader in high-quality water. We've always served high-quality water, and we'll continue to do so. But I understand the pressure on being put on local elects, et cetera. But we'll follow up after this.
Yes.
But thank you.
Yeah. So, a couple more points. February is Black History Month, and we're not only honoring the achievements of the black community, but also highlighting the accomplishments and work of our African-American employees at DWP. We remember and honor the legacy of Black History Month, which began in 1926 as the Negro History Week. Fifty years later, Black History Month was born in 1976, and its profound cultural significance continues today. And I just want to highlight what Commissioner McGrath said. Here at DWP, we celebrate the diversity of all our employees, all our employees, and we want them all to thrive. It makes us the department that we are today. And one way that we do that is through the National Society of Black Engineers, which promotes engineering and science fields for our black communities or ethnic minorities. We also today celebrate the 10th International Day of Women and Girls in Science. And here at DWP, again, we have a lot of talented women that are either engineers in the science field that volunteer a great amount of time to mentor girls that are interested in science and technology fields, and we're very proud of their accomplishment. And we have the Society of Women Engineers that give back to a lot of the new generation of STEM professionals. And lastly, I want to introduce our new executive team members. First, Norma Grobs, and Norma's over there. She is joining DWP as the Chief Information and Chief AI Officer, and she will lead our transformative IT strategy, leveraging AI technology to improve our efficiency and our processes. Then Kendall Helm is our new Chief Strategy and Sustainability Officer, which will be working on our LA 100 strategy, LA 100 equity strategies, and many other strategic plans for the department. And then Joanne Martin, who's sitting next to Norma, is our Chief Risk and Compliance Officer, and she'll be working on our risk management and compliance efforts and ensuring that our operations meet the highest standards of quality, compliance, and governance. So, I am excited about this team, and I look forward to working with them on the new base of DWP.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Welcome. I had a comment. I just want to say thank you, CEO Ken Yones, and just echo what Commissioner McGrath said, that, you know, we do not see there being any trade-off between focusing on diversity, equity, and inclusion and focusing on merit and performance within this organization. There is a lot of political dialogue around this right now, and speaking from a background of science and ecology, diversity is strength in every natural system that exists, and I think the same is true for our organization. So, we will continue to support our employees from diverse backgrounds and ensure that we are training and teaching people not to let anyone's background impact how they're being judged for their work. Along the same lines, I also just want to state for the record, thank you for speaking to your own background, but it shouldn't fall on you to defend your background. We, as a board and the mayor, hired you for this job, and we are very, very grateful to have your leadership during this time, especially with your background in emergency management. There is nobody that I would want in charge of this department during this difficult time that we're going through with our city, and I just want to state that very clearly. I know that a lot of people in Los Angeles are in pain and have suffered enormous loss, and it is natural to want to look for someone to blame. As a board, we definitely take this responsibility seriously in terms of evaluating our leadership, and we will evaluate our CEO as we normally would do on an annual basis. And we will certainly be looking at all the results of different investigations and looking at leadership performance in this. But we have very strong confidence that we made the right decision in selecting you as our CEO, and I really have been so impressed with the entire team and how you've managed during this emergency response, and just very grateful to have you at the helm of this organization. So, thank you, Janice.
Okay. Moving along, we're going to, before we go to Mr. Pickle, who I'm pleased is still with us, that's not a comment on his health or anything like that. We're just happy that he is continuing as the process grinds slowly to find a replacement for our ratepayer advocate. But before we do that, let me turn to George for a resolution that he brought up at the last meeting.
Yeah.
But it dovetails nicely with what Narit was saying, so.
Yeah, I do think it dovetails nicely. We're, you know, for Shante's edification, this is a motion for future consideration because it wasn't agendized for today's meeting, but all the board members have a copy of the motion in front of you, which you can read in detail, which we'll include in the next meeting. It's essentially both authorizing and ordering the department to conduct our own internal investigation in partnership with city, state, and federal agencies around our performance surrounding the fires that we've experienced in this, you know, horrendous wind event. It outlines, I'll just read those operative clauses so that it's very clear, that we, the Board of Commissioners, hereby direct LEDWP, working in collaboration with and input from the Los Angeles Fire Department and city, county, state, and federal agencies to provide a comprehensive report evaluating the successes and shortcomings of the 2024 WMP update. That's our wildfire mitigation plan, you know, of which we have a really strong and well-respected wildfire mitigation plan, but this is a new, sort of a new reality that we're entering now. So, we want to look at our WMP as the basis for how we can improve our performance along these indicators over time. Be it further resolved that this report should include specific metrics on ignition sources, which I understand, you know, are sort of out of our control in terms of the investigation, but we'll get information from CAL FIRE, response times, equipment usage, water availability, importantly, the reservoir and hydrants, water and power infrastructure opportunities and challenges, and the effectiveness of implemented strategies alongside actionable recommendations to further mitigate wildfire risks in the future. And finally, that our staff shall report back to the board with recommendations that account for the city's responses associated with fire preparedness and response to the recent Palisades, Kenneth Hurst, and other fires exacerbated by human activity and climate change, including but not limited to, again, ignition sources, response times, equipment usage, water availability, water and power infrastructure needs, and grid resiliency to greatly improve fire resiliency citywide. It's our commitment as an agency to collaborate with our city, state, and federal partners openly, transparently, boldly in their own investigations. And the form those investigations will take is still sort of developing and taking shape as city council decides the direction they want to take things and as we respond to the governor's request. So, this is, in addition to that coordination, this is to sort of take some of the information from those investigations, combine it with our own sort of source of knowledge and truth here at the agency, and to build a plan to help us strengthen our infrastructure and our response for future events. So, again, that language is in front of you, and we'll agendize it for the next meeting.
Yeah. And again, just to reemphasize what George started with, this is not necessarily something new on top of everything else, but gathering the best information from what's out there. We'll probably do something somewhat separate in terms of DWP itself, but that, going forward, it's also our intent to coordinate, and we're closely with the other investigations. We don't need just people piling on top of piling on, but because we're interested in the results and we're interested in any changes and improvements we need to make. And I know everybody here that I've talked to and everybody in this department believes the same, as does the commission, that, you know, it's all about getting better, and we can always do that. So, Janice?
Yeah. We started with the WMP updates, and Joanne is leading that for us with her experience in wildfire from PG&E. And also, we know that CAL FIRE is updating their fire maps, which will definitely change our WMP and the requirements for that. We're also working on a climate resiliency plan, which Soraya Griffin will be working on that will coordinate with the WMP and other resiliency plans for preparedness. A crisis like this, we have to use it to get better every time. And so, that's our attitude about this, and we're taking this very seriously. We started our own investigation the week after the fire started, and there's more investigations that we need to do, including after-action reports that are starting tomorrow for the EOC and then for the field response aspects of the emergency response.
Correct.
Thank you. It's really great to hear that the utility is focused both on emergency response and immediate, but then also on that long-term resilience planning and how we really prepare for the shocks and stressors to come. So, thank you.
I noticed that everyone, and by the way, thank you for the resolution that will be on our, for us to vote on next time. But I did hear the word crisis every time in preparation. So, all of those things feed into each other. And it is sad to say that the next crisis, we'll have to look back. And then, I don't mean the crisis for DWP, but for the city at large. So, we're always looking forward, looking backwards, and we're doing it all in real time.
Yes.
And this is, unfortunately, this is the laws of nature, certainly the laws of fire. We have a rainstorm coming up Thursday. We're going to be looking back at how could we have, not we necessarily, the DWP, but the city, should we have put a barricade here or there? These are things that are historic, so you're looking back. They're present and occurring, which means crisis, and they're going forward. So, it's a lot of balls in the air at the same time. And I personally appreciate all those people who have to deal with one or more of those balls. I don't think anybody anymore has one ball in their head. So, I say, we do what we have done, and we do better. It's an ongoing thing. It's live. It's not stagnant. So, even when we have all these investigations and new people looking at us, there are going to be a lot of, "You did it just right," and there are going to be a fewer, "Oh, you could have done this," because DWP is not this current board. It's not this current manager and executive. It's the past, the present, and the future. And that's very difficult to understand, especially in the middle of a crisis. So, to those here, to those listening, to those affected, it is something that everyone cares about.
Thank you, Wilma. Appreciate that. Dr. Pickles, you're up.
The one agenda item in the N's, N3, I suggest the board may want to hear a presentation on this, given its size and the fact that only one bidder made it through the hurdles of pass fail. Just to understand what the choices were, I understand grading bidders on performance and financial components. That's always challenging. You wonder if you're being too strict or too loose. So, I think it'd be useful to have that discussion. Second, I would like to comment on the wisdom of Commissioner Pinder on the subject of coffee and water orders. Having just been through what felt like a long weekend with a Do Not Drink order because of the Eaton fire, more than one morning, I walked down, turned on the tap, and filled the tank for the coffee machine, and went, "Oops," dumping it and rinsing it out with bottled water and filling it again. And the cats suffered that more than once, too. The last comment is a comment on item F, which is the OPA comments. This will likely be my last meeting. Unless there's a glitch, I will likely retire on February 22nd, after a little over 13 years of work in this role.
It may be his last meeting, but not the last. We'll see or hear from Fred. He and I've already had a conversation. I've asked him if he would come back and address the board in terms of, you know, lessons learned, looking forward to the future, recommendations for us as part of this ongoing evolution, given his 13-year experience, which is more times than any of us on the board have longer time have had. But there's a lot of wisdom that Dr. Pickle carries with him, and we're going to work that out for one of the next board meetings. So, it may be your last board meeting soon, but we'll see you again, obviously. And currently appreciate all of your time with us and the wisdom you've shared. Whether we followed it or not, we respect it and appreciate it, and I hope we followed it more than we didn't.
It is a governance process. You can't be too proud of your recommendations.
Well, thank you very much, Fred. Things got dragged out so long, and you were so kind to stay. And so long that I sort of stopped believing you were really going to leave. So, I'm saddened to hear that this is your last meeting and have really appreciated working with you over the last couple of years that I've been on the board. Your technical expertise and understanding and what goes into the calculations of the rate analysis that you do is really extraordinary, and it helped me understand why it's been such a difficult search to find a replacement. Definitely big shoes to fill, and I just want to say how much I've really appreciated all of your insights and analysis. So, thank you, Fred.
I will add, the committee doing the search is working closed-door at this point, and I thankfully have not been invited in. But they expect to interview most of the first-round candidates by the end of February 20th and be switching to looking at the finalists. I think they have a group of about nine preliminary candidates at this point.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you for that update. We appreciate that. Again, thank you for everything that you've done for the department and our ratepayers, particularly everyone in LA is better off for your service, Fred, and we appreciate that.
Yeah. And I was looking around the room for one of the people staffing that committee to correct me on the facts if he wanted to.
So far, so good, Fred. Your record continues. So, all right. We're going to move on now to, where am I? Where, Fred? Okay, so, we've got block fight, which is the N items.
Yes.
Yes. David, do you want to come up and make a comment on N3, since Fred raised that? Just, I don't know that anybody had any questions, but Fred raised it, so let's not.
Yeah, if we could have the presentation and specifically get some more background on the financial test fail for the second bidder, that would be super helpful.
Sure, sure. So, joining me is Janice Smith. She's interim director of Supply Chain Services. I'm David Jaco, Director of Distributed Energy Solutions. We have a full presentation for this item. I don't know, since the question was pretty specific, it's up to Board of Commissioners if you want to see the entire presentation or cut straight to...
Let's do the abbreviated presentation, answer his question. But to start with just an overview of the program, just briefly for those who may not be familiar with it, but it is a true public-private partnership in all senses of the word and a very successful one. This is a re-up of it, essentially. But please, David.
Okay, sure, sure. Happy to do that. So, you know, this is a key cornerstone program to our larger energy efficiency efforts, which are essential to helping us meet the LA 100 goals, decarbonizing our grid, supporting electrification, bringing on untraditional load, unconventional load, while getting rid of conventional load helps make everything else in the system smaller, the new investments we have to make throughout the transmission-distribution systems. It also is one of our equity programs. It serves two purposes on that. And our speakers who spoke at the start in support of the program kind of made half my presentation for me, so I don't want to be duplicative, but they nailed it. You know, we serve our smaller mom-and-pop business customers, commercial customers, nonprofits, also smaller city facilities, and we do it by supporting smaller local IBW and Local 11 contractors, some of whom may have struggled to be signatories to IBW Local 11. And this program gives them a very cost-effective way to be signatories, to build a business model around participating, and to support their apprentices. And I think one of the speakers spoke to that, how this is an excellent program for... speakers spoke to that, how this is an excellent program for apprentices to get their hours on their way to journey level. Pretty much got this. So, let's get in a little bit here. So, we did select Will Dan as our implementer. The contract is a five-year contract for up to $330 million across the five years. That's comparable to what we had in the previous term, which was similar, $300 million over five years, although we extended it a year for $60 million, so it ultimately was $360 million over six years. That was procured through SCAPPA, but it was essentially the same idea. We had committed to start insourcing all those SCAPPA contracts, not do it through SCAPPA anymore, this one's been procured internally through Supply Chain Services. But it's the same idea, there's an implementer, that's Will Dan, who offers a turnkey program management system to us, where the assessments, the labor, the materials, equipment, supplies are all run through this contract. Now, Will Dan is the one doing the, supplying the materials and providing the warehousing, but they hire the Local 11 contractors to actually do the work. They manage the contractors, they manage the workflow, they assign them out, they send them out on the jobs, they coordinate the jobs for maximum efficiency, so that they send them out, you know, do as many jobs as one day as possible, so there's geographic scheduling that's involved, the contractors come pick up the supplies from the warehouses, so there's economies of scale in that as well. So, it's a machine, it's a well-oiled machine, not something we could run internally.
Was Will Dan the project implementer under the SCAPPA, the previous SCAPPA scheme?
So, the last implementer we hired under SCAPPA was Lime Energy.
Lime?
In 2018, and Will Dan subsequently acquired Lime, so this is the first time we're actually hiring Will Dan directly ourselves.
Right, because I saw that they came across as a new contractor, so they had to do all the preliminary evaluation.
Yeah, they just happened to acquire the previous one we had selected under SCAPPA.
Thank you.
So, for the contracting piece, so we bid this out, and the supply chain services process goes out on three different channels.
As I understand, the point of this is to involve smaller companies that wouldn't normally be able to either contract through or work out an arrangement with IBW, or to get small businesses that would not be otherwise participating in the energy efficiency programs and get them into the mix.
Yep.
Is pretty much what this is about.
And that's what happens at the Local 11 contractor level, and I've got some statistics about small contractor participation in the program. So, you know, the way it looks, there's one big implementer, obviously, a $330 million contract over five years, but they don't do any of the actual installation work. So, Will Dan doesn't turn any screws, cut any wires, no bargaining unit work. They're the master implementer, like to think of it as a general contractor, the GC, but the spread the wealth portion of it to encourage small contractors to be able to play in this program occurs at the level of the Local 11 contractors, who will be anywhere between 10 to 18 of these contractors, and sometimes they have five people in the shop, sometimes they have 20. We anticipate in a new program, there'll be between 100 and 150 active Local 11 members, members, working on the project at any given time, working on the program at any given time. In the previous program, it's been, you know, it's varied between seven and 12 small contractors, between 80 and 120 Local 11 members at any given time. It varies, it fluctuates based on where the business is, if we've had a slowdown. COVID introduced a lot of variability, there wasn't a whole lot we could do during COVID. We had a couple of shutdown years where all we could do was the work in LAUSD. But anticipating that we were getting out of procuring this through SCAPPA and that the SCAPPA agreement was terminating in December of 2023, back in 2021, we initiated this RFP process internally through Supply Chain Services, and we bid it out through, I believe it was three, through, we advertised it, I should say, we, the contract's on one platform, but we advertised it through three different procurement platforms to make sure we get awareness, City Valuet Ramp, the ERSP, and, you know, through SCAPPA, there were a lot of contractors that worked through SCAPPA that we wanted to let them know, it was like, it was like, you know, a vendor list, so we let them know. And, you know, we didn't get a ton of submissions, we got a number of folks that downloaded it, and so it was viewed 84 times of various primes and subs. We extended the submission period a couple of times, 60 days and 84 days for potential And then we ultimately got two. Let me talk a little bit more about the program evolution here, but I've pretty much covered that.
Any questions on this?
Can you give us any more detail about why the second bidder failed their financial test, and I think help us get to Fred's questions around how loose or tight our understanding of their financial and accounting practices need to be in order to qualify to bid on this?
So, I'll speak to that, if it's okay. Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Tanisha Smith, as David has said. So, I can tell you that it is not Supply Chain that looks at their financial risk, it's also not the valuation team, it's actually Financial Services Organization. So, they're the ones that are responsible for looking at it, but I keep looking at my phone because I can tell you what their results came up with, and as David has said, you know, and as we've heard, there is a lot of monies that are being spent, and the way that this contract is set up, it's like, I call it pay-as-you-go, that's probably not the perfect word to use, but Will Dan doesn't get paid unless they show results. So, someone has to still fit those costs, so it's important to make sure that you have that financial backing. So, what was said when FSO conducted their review, the conclusion was that they did not have the net worth, the assets and the working capital that could support this size of a contract. So, that was the result as to why they had failed that particular evaluation criteria.
So, they vetted it on that, I mean, they vetted it and looked at it in comparison, and that's the conclusion they came up with?
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense, that a contract like this would be at least partially on reimbursement. You'd need the upfront cash to make the program go. Do you have any additional details from FSO to add?
I don't, I went through, and I'm looking at the board letter right now, and it does say that they didn't have sufficient financial resources. I mean, basically, the contractor has to upfront, provide all the materials, the labor, and then once it's deemed that they put a project in that has energy efficiency savings, that they would get reimbursed, so there is some upfront capital that somebody doing this work would have to have.
Okay.
And it's always, you know, that's part of the job, too, to look at who didn't get it, who did get it, but I can say that the people who look at this, they're very serious about it, because in the long run, if they pick the wrong person, that company goes bankrupt or that company doesn't produce, then we're in a deeper hole. So, there's always, that's why we have multiple bids, so that we can pick somebody we believe to be, and I think you put it very well, it's a kind of a pay-as-you-go sort of thing, so we're seeing the results as they produce, and I appreciate the thoroughness that goes into vetting and telling bidder number two, three, and four, sorry, try again. I mean, it's a very rough and tough game getting the business of a public entity like DWP.
Yep, and part of it is our implementer, because we're trying to support, continue, have continuity with this ecosystem, a small mom-and-pop Local 11 contractors that we've supported and built with the program over the last 10 to 12 years, they have, you know, some limitations in terms of float. They need to get paid, they do the work, they need to get paid. They submit their certified payrolls, that's a requirement of the program, because we're doing this under a project labor agreement, so they need to get paid immediately once they've done the work. Then, we reimburse Will Dan as they invoice us. That time period can be, depending, you know, depending on how we set up the billing, and as we go through, sometimes there's dispute resolution on invoices and things like that, it can be, you know, it's supposed to be a month, it could be two, whatever that is, the upfront contractor can't float. So, we need a vendor, an implementer in between us and the mom-and-pop that has some ability of float, and on a program like this, where we're, you know, we're at this magnitude to serve the number of customers we're trying to serve, 40,000 customers over the term of the contract, that requires, you know, a solid balance sheet.
Very well stated.
Yeah, I think it's really important for us to understand these things when, especially when the proposals, the bids are so vastly different, so I really appreciate you coming up and giving us those numbers.
All right, we're taking a look at, we have items N1 through 5. Motion in a second, please.
Motion to approve items N1 through 5.
Second?
Second. Any objection to all Commissioners present being recorded as I-votes?
No objection.
Seeing no objections, such shall be the order. So, that is taken care of. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, David. We must be at Ben's favorite part of the meeting.
Do you guys want to approve the minutes? Hold on, minutes from last meeting?
Not particularly, but...
That's up to you.
Motion in a second, Ben was waiting for that cue. Without objection, the minutes are approved. Now, Ben?
Yes. The board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention of every member present thereon in accordance with Section 54957.1 of the California Government Code. Thank you.
We have two reportable items coming out of closed session. The first is Agenda Item 01, which is a claim brought by NAHMI Inc. This is an inverse condemnation claim arising from two water main breaks. The proposed settlement amount is $194,101.77, and the board voted to approve that settlement. The second item is Agenda Item 02, which is California Capital Insurance v. Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, LASC case number 24, CHCV 02711. This is an inverse condemnation case arising out of a failed underground vault. The settlement amount in that matter is $118,216.20, and the board voted to approve that settlement as well, and those are the two reportable items. Thank you very much.